...devoted to helping the full history of Lucasville, providing care support to those who suffer from its brutal impact. And whereas the chapter writing the city of Florisville community to wear the color purple and to further unify the support for those living with the disease. And whereas awareness is vital in raising funds for research for those affected by Lucasville. And it is our responsibility as a community to advocate on their behalf and to further encourage educational programs so everyone affected by Lucasville can have an important quality of life. Now therefore, I, Mayor Poteam, too, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor Portina of the city of Florisville, Texas, do hereby proclaim May 18th, 2018, as Put On Purple Day throughout the city of Florisville and urge all citizens to support the cause of raising awareness of Lucasville so that we can have a world with no Lucasville. If when this were as I, here on to set my hand across the cooperative seal of City to be fixed this 10th day of May, 2018.
I'll make a motion to you. Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand.
Any coffee and comments? You take a look at your coffee and comments? Is your publicist in comments?
I'm sorry, is there any citizen's comment? No? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much for this area.
Thank you so much for taking the time.
Have a safe trip. Okay, now we're to item B. CNA to approve the Phelps summer youth program.
Yes, Mayor Portina. Okay, so Phelps has given us the total amount in $6,172 this year. There's a letter in your packet from Phelps for 2018 as well as a request that we received. I am recommending for the summer youth program recommendation for the youth programs as follows. A Wilson County Public Library is $2,500. Wilson County Elite Ball Youth, $500. Wilson County Elite Football Summer Camp, $500. Our community of the year, which as you know does the free movies for the kids and the youth programs and they're from June to July, 1,672 hours of the ballet for $500 and all city programs for $500. I do have to say that some of our requests, we're really happy to say that they've been able to find additional funding and so we wanted to give as much funding as we could. I think last year we gave some, they're receiving $500, $1,000, but they were able to find some additional funding, so we wanted to include some other things and to incorporate it. But this is my recommendation. I did put their request in writing behind in your packet about the things they're being able to do and if you have any questions or comments, I'd be more than happy to address them.
I'll make a motion to approve this.
So we're gonna give them... Can I ask? Yes. So we have to match the $6,000?
So the match that we have to do is what we've been doing in the past is an in-kind match. And it's the use of this facility here. We give them an award and so we give them an in-kind match to be able to use this facility. The library has had an event here, I believe, we're having an event for the youth, we're having an event here at the event center that you use as part of the match and so that's our portion that we match to them.
Okay, so we already have a... Do we have a second?
Question. Can I ask one question?
Okay, do you have any questions? Does anybody have any questions? Any comments? No? Okay, who wants a second? Second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Let's go to item C. To CNA to approve a student entry program with FEDC.
Yes, now I met with the superintendent and they are really, really excited to think about the city of Florisville being a partner to them. Now they use this youth program and the students are paid at $7.75 per hour. The students, it is a school program, so it's like a work program, a work-study program. They hire some of the students themselves to work in the school and so what they are allowed to do two classroom periods, so they can work between the hours of 8:00 to 10:00 or they can work from 3:00 to 5:00. The uniqueness of our program, if you all decide to go this way, is that the students that we can offer to will have to provide their own transportation, so they have to get to us and then come back. The timing is a little off because school starts in August, our fiscal year doesn't start until October as you know, so we're gonna have to do a budget amendment. But I can see that we can use students and they want to have real jobs. They can do filing, answer phones, they can assist with a lot of different things, even here at the event center to help do answering phones, computer, help people put on those wonderful apps and I'm quite sure all those wonderful students know how to do that. And so that's what we could do is in every process, we can do that. Also, I think Councilman Ortiz, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Councilman, wants to look at a mentoring program. We see honor programs, usually do a mentoring program. And when the school starts up, they're gonna start again to start talking about if there's students that are volunteers and they're interested in doing that. But that would happen probably sometime in early October because school year is getting young, I think they're having prom this weekend. So those kind of things we can start with the new year, but we need to decide so that before school is out, they can have assignments. Most of the students are juniors and seniors. There is a fee, but it is affordable for us to do because it is straight $7.75. There is of course no benefits. And so I think my recommendation is somewhere we could do between 100, 46 students depending on what you're gonna do, but definitely I would like to have students here.
Well, let's look at it to see what we can do and I make a motion to...
Well, let's see if there's any questions or citizens' comments. Is there any questions for the council?
Yes. Who are these funds gonna be coming from?
The funds will be coming from the general fund itself. Right now, as we spoke at the last week, there is a position, a part-time position that we didn't fill and I have not been able to maintain it. So we can, for August, when we start, we can use that fund and we can use that number. Actually, I met with the chief, I'm really proud of them, they haven't gone over on their overtime and Mark has done a wonderful young man's job of keeping his overtime under control. So it would be a budget line item out of your general fund, fund 301.
There's gonna be, an amendment's gonna have to come before us, too?
Yes, sir. As soon as you tell me to take an action list, there'll be an amendment to the current, kinda like the current year because it starts in August and then we'll have it in our workshop and it'll be in the budget.
With, if we get six students, how much would you go with that?
If we can get six students, I think we're not, but when I talk to Connie, it's miserable as what, actually what one employee will cost you per day? Because they're only at $7.75, we have employees, all the employees start at $10 an hour and so we're only talking about four hours a day at most for each student.
Right. So that would be something for 15, 30 a day?
Yes, so it's very affordable, but we can have...
That's possible, 50.
The budget amendment would be in the school for August, but we have to do one and then we would definitely program it into your October budget for the year.
Instead of council taking it from the general fund or wanting to take it from that fund that we had left over from the legal fees? Instead of going to the general fund, our reserve?
Well, for this fiscal year, that would be a very simple thing to do because we already have identified savings that we can save that the same savings that we used, that we bought for that, we work for this fiscal year and then we can actually have a line out for that in our next budget year.
I suggest we just look at it and we go by where we could afford it, we can afford it.
Yes, sir. So I have a motion to...
I have a motion to approve it.
Can I go out second? Are there not any questions or anything from the citizens? No? Who's gonna second?
Please, sir.
No, for this one. Okay, and then all in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, item D. CNA to award the bid for the downtown parking lot material.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Portina. Well, what we did was we tabled this item last meeting. The engineer, I apologize, unable to make it tonight, but he is recommending, as am I, that we reject this one bid that we received, but we did open it and we publicly opened it and we had to either accept it or reject this bid. I'm the committee that we reject the bid.
Do I have a motion?
I have a question. I don't know the legality of anything, what it is or what, but I suggest that like the engineers, you know, like in perfect, they were in charge of this project, why didn't they come in before and say, well, you know what, the city, it would cost the city X amount of dollars knowing that we're gonna do it ourselves? They take the initiative until after they read the bid. So what do we have to do here?
Mr.... Please.
Excuse me, wasn't going out to bid a requirement from FEDC to go out to get a bid?
Councilman, FEDC said that we needed to do it according to our normal procedures and our normal procurement procedures. We did bid it twice, Councilman, as I said before, we went out, the first time we received no bids, we went the second time and we did receive this one bid. I think the uniqueness of this bid is typically we don't just do materials, it's the labor and the parts. I know Councilman Johnson suggested that fact that the part may only cost you $50, but it's $100 to put it in. And so with this just being the material, it is a unique way to do it. Now we can use a byboard for the majority, which is, I think, is what he put together and did more apples and oranges, apples and apples kind of thing.
You're going away from the question, the thing is that you opened a bid, if it was one, you should have rejected it. If that's what you wanted to do, but you opened the bid.
But the engineer...
Another, can I say what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
Another, how can you, it's consideration and action item to award a bid or reject a bid and our engineer was allowed to come up and say, well, you know what, we got broken materials that are wanting to come in for X amount of dollars. Why didn't he do that before so that way, hey, maybe the project would have been finished already? We went through the process for two or three months and that engineer is in charge of the project. So I mean, I don't think that's, that's too good for the city of Florisville that someone's gonna take the time and stuff to say, you have to come and give a bid.
Well, typically, the engineer cannot reject the bid, he can only make a recommendation of the bid.
No, I know, but he came the same day, the same day as for the bid. Like for example, we did the water lines, there was a between $250,000 to $300,000 difference in pricing. Are we supposed to open up a bid and say, well, you know what, this is the lowest, but I think this guy can make it cheaper? And me come in and say, well, you know what, I think the city of Florisville should deny this bid and we could do it cheaper this way. I don't, I don't know what the legality is or whatever, but if we're gonna save money, I'm all for saving the money, right? But the thing is, you know, for next time, I don't think that should happen that way.
So we had to come to council to go out to bid and you all gave me permission to go out to bid. And so then we, once we went out to bid and we found, I didn't bring it back the first time because there was nothing for you all to approve, when we did receive a bid, you all either have to accept it or reject it. Typically, it comes with an engineer recommendation and so the engineer was making a recommendation to reject the bid.
Your engineer was, the day of the opening of the bid, he was there?
Yes, he was there.
And he recommended, what, to accept the bid or not to accept it?
What he recommended was he takes it back, he asked the unit price, he double-checked to make sure that it was there, he made some calculations himself and then he wanted to know what the unit price was as well as checking out his references as well as taking to make sure he had enough insurance. That's what he had to do. But in doing so, he looked at the numbers to say that we could go to the byboard and do something because there's no labor involved at all, there's no David's bacon we have to deal with, there's no, the scope of work is just the material itself. And so his recommendation, but you all tabled it to come back because it wasn't necessarily apples and oranges what he was comparing.
Okay, but all I'm saying is it's safe for us to reject it, the money gonna get a lawsuit from it since you opened it and whatever.
We have to open a bid because he submitted it in a sealed fashion and the only person who could...
You rejected it because it was only one bid.
We rejected it because the engineer's recommending a different way for us to go or reject it because it's only one bid? Either way, you all can reject this bid or accept this bid, but we publicly put it...
So now the city of Florisville, when, like for example, Waters got the bid, so now some engineer could come and say, well, you know what, I could do it cheaper than that?
They could not because we actually had more than one bid, we had three or four different bids.
You should have opened, you should have opened the bid, if you're willing to get it.
If you see one bid, you have to open it.
Okay, well...
Okay, so we're gonna have a, the motion is to reject it.
I'd like to make a motion to reject this case.
Okay. All in favor of rejecting it, raise your right hand. Okay, let's go to item E. I'm sorry, do we have any citizens' comments or any questions? Yeah, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Portina, members, council staff. In regard to this parking lot situation, the part that I have is probably coming next and it has to do with the Center Point Energy. When you do the parking lot in downtown, the area on the corner across the street from the steakhouse or the restaurants that are involved there, and the bank isn't happening to be private property from some of the owners, including the hardware store that I got a large portion of their land, it's my understanding that Center Point Energy from Houston had not provided undergrounding there and the tenants around it are charged a fee, a tax fee for not using any gas. So if they go over six months, they don't get, they get bid. So they decided to collapse the gas. Now, Center Point Energy is saying that they're gonna come in and dig up the whole parking lot and remove their gas line. So I kind of like being aware that basically this happened and you all pay this part, they don't come back and dig it out to remove the pipe. My suggestion would be to take that Center Point Energy to this, to dig the pipe on the ground and cut the main part out of some place and avoid re-digging the parking lot that happened on the surface. It's just a comment, when you ever come up, that you are aware that this is in the making. The Center Point Energy come in and remove it.
Center Point Energy, right now, it has their five-year plan that they're working on. On the side that we have, this other side, not the movie side, terrorists, behind terrorists, they're replacing that pipe now, right now, so that they won't tear up the parking lot to fix it back. And they decided to shut off and just cut off that line on the side of the hardware and the movie stores and so they're actually have done that, I believe Mark can address, but they're doing in the parking lot, well, their back area now.
Right, and what typically happens, it's common practice, if they abandon a line, it stays.
So they're gonna remove it?
There's no fear of going back in and once they kill that pipe, go back and pull it out?
They just wanted to make sure that you don't find yourself with these people to do the payment, come back in and dig it out.
Yes, sir.
I understand that they're gonna come and remove it, I was wondering why they removed it, they're getting cut off with all the ink?
That's right, they abandoned the line, they capped it, they hit it there.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, we appreciate it, yes, very much.
And his comment was telling me because it is on the next, the next item there.
Is there, is there any more citizens' comments or do you want to just? No, then we'll go to item, I'm sorry, next turn.
No.
Is that what you were saying?
Yes, ma'am.
We're going to item, is it item, I think that's E?
Yes, ma'am, he is an...
Item E, direct the city manager to purchase, purchase material for the downtown parking lot.
What the attorney, I mean, so what the engineer attempts to do on the page that you see in the spreadsheet was to compare what, if we go in with the contractor, what it would have been, and now it would be if we directly do it by cost and the company that we're using for is a company that has a byboard application. He says that there would be savings of almost $100,000 by doing it directly. Our wonderful public works director has gone through and talked about the signage as well and I believe that would be the total signage he has, that the total will be $18,835. So there would be a significant savings for us breaking apart and doing it. We also have a small concrete portion of it that we can go and I believe that's gonna be under $50,000, so we won't necessarily have to bid that. And so what I'm asking for is for you all to give me direction to go and start purchasing this because as you know, this is above my pay rate or speed, I can't prove anything without that.
Is there any questions from the council? About from citizens? No comments?
Yes, I think I just have some questions, maybe I'm going to finish here. Where is this, Florisville? Now, what was the decision on the previous item?
To decline it, just to...
So the recommendation right now is to go ahead and allow or direct the city manager to purchase materials under what category?
We would purchase the materials directly from the Texas byboard, which means we don't necessarily have to meet the constraints of the bidding process, just to do it directly. And we have a cost analysis of the savings and so if we break it down for the signage and the stops, those are all under $50,000 and so we can bid with party filter directly and the state does not require us to go out to bid. So it's no longer the contractor, we're just gonna purchase it directly and there is a significant savings.
Do we have an amount we get regarding the materials for the downtown parking lot?
Yes, sir, according to what the engineer's saying that we can possibly save, because the bid committed $226,000, he's saying that we could actually save...
Up to $226,000?
Yes, up to, what he's saying that we could actually save approximately $96,187.
I recommend the action.
Thank you.
But that's on the material, right?
There's also savings on the signs and the stops as well as that right now?
That's correct.
Is there any more, is there any questions? Well, now, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, we accept, this will turn here to go, and public works to go out and buy directly.
Okay, all in favor of to direct the city manager to purchase materials for the downtown parking lot project? Raise your right hand. Now, item, S, CNA to direct the city manager to give that event center sign.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, what you have in your packet is the signed bid process. It does include the structural engineer for immunoอด, so that we can have it structurally sound, that's that filled out map, to be able to do that. What I am proposing are the dates to release this on the 14th of May and to have the bids to be submitted back to the city in the sealed bid. Also, I want to invite the design companies that bid before, I believe two years ago, and to have them to submit the bid. Now, what we did was we made it more generic so that they can have the mean way, because you will see somewhere and there was this, "our best light", so we're just trying to save this sign over to close because it is something that we're being able to put together to bid and then we can see what their cost will be coming back.
All right. Is there any questions from the council? Any comments from the citizens? Then I'll take a motion.
So move there, ma'am.
Do I have a second?
One second.
Okay, all in favor of us to direct the city manager to give to the event center sign, raise your right hand. Okay, let's go. And who's against?
Me, too.
Thank you. Just for the record, we're asking for those comments to be back on June 14th and so then after 14th, then we're gonna put it together and I'll bring them back to the council for your review.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item G, CNA to accept the private offer or GM?
Excuse me, I'd like to make a correction on the vote. This time you put two, two mayor votes.
No, Mayor Portin can vote.
At the same time, okay.
Yes, the mayor doesn't vote in this time, but a Mayor Portin, even though they're chairing the meeting, can vote.
I think that's what we've done before, yes.
Yes, sir. That's where, that's where. Okay, let's go to item G. CNA to accept the private offer from JM and Living Trust to purchase 50 property, 710 Borriat Road, Florisville, Texas, 78114, tax account number 2710-16000-00100 for the sum of $1,000. Mr. Jeff Garcia, council of this big package that you have on the G is for the, for the next three items, this one and the next two, they're all in there.
You could actually take all three items together because I will be explaining all three at one point.
Okay, can we do that?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Portin, council members, staff. My name is Jeff Garcia, I'm the partner in charge for the Land Borriat Law Firm. We do your delinquent property tax collections on behalf of the city of Florisville. You have before you information or a packet on three bids that we received at a tax resale we conducted the first week in April. Before I get to those specifics on those three bids that we received at that tax resale, I'm gonna go ahead and kind of bring this up to the point of how we got to this point of receiving those bids and kind of explain the whole process. So as your delinquent attorney, what we do is obviously tax bills every year go out in October and individuals have until February to pay those taxes before they go delinquent. We still did not receive those receivables in February, it's not until the following July when the property taxes, if they still have not been paid, get turned over to our law firm to be collected. Now, just because an account is turned over to us, that does not mean that a lawsuit gets filed. Lawsuits basically are a last resort from our law firm. We first attempt to send out mailings to all the taxpayers to advise them of the delinquency and then if we still have no response, then we move to a second collection program, which means we have staff which are basically calling the taxpayer to advise them of the delinquency and try to set up the payment agreement to get those taxes paid. Yet after all of our resources, we still have not got the taxes paid, then unfortunately we have to move forward into the litigation phase and actually file delinquent tax lawsuits against the taxpayers to get those taxes paid. And all of these three properties here began with delinquent tax lawsuits. So we went through the entire process of going through court and finding nobody again paid the taxes. We obtained judgments on all three properties and after obtaining judgments, which basically gives us the ability to sell properties for the taxes that are due, we still didn't get any response from the taxpayers or the owners of those property. And so unfortunately, we had to move those properties into tax sale status. Now, the difference between the bid we received here, which were conducted under a resale by all, first time we go to sell a property for taxes, we have to sell them for the taxes plus cost, that is the minimum that we must sell a property at the courthouse steps, the very first tax sale. If we do not receive the taxes that are due plus the cost at the first tax sale, then that property has to be struck off to the entities which are part of the property, which are the county, the school and the city as trustees of that property to await a resale and that's what we did. So on that first property, it was struck off in 2017. The other two were struck off in 2012. So we basically conduct around six tax sales per year. So if you can imagine going back to 2012, one of those last two, we've been trying to sell them ever since then and the 2017 property, we've been selling it since 2017. Keep in mind that as soon as that property is struck off, every time that we go to tax Keep in mind that as soon as that property is struck off, every time that we go to tax sale, my law firm is incurring, uh, expenses for having to publish, uh, in the newspaper for three consecutive weeks, um, to publish that notice of sale that goes out to advise everybody that they have the ability to come in and bid on these properties that we've